Okay, welcome to the historic planning commission meeting for August 28th. Please call it all.
Mr. Cappers.
Here.
Mrs. Snee, here. Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mrs. Mahan.
Here.
Mr. Titterington.
Here.
Mr. Wilkie.
Here.
Mayor Bemish, we have a forum.
Okay, we have our minutes disseminated to us as of the meeting of August 14th. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes?
A move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Loews in favor, second by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, he stands second. Next matter on the agenda is historic district application for 322 West Main Street. Staff have a report.
Yes, sir, we do. The applicant, Mr. Lees, and also the property owner, Mr. Kummer, are in the audience here. Again, they were here last month for some signage. They have submitted a new application with a new sign layout for the property of 322 West Main Street. Again, this property is located at the southeast intersection of Oxford Street and West Main Street, one block west of Port House. Property is on B2 General Business District. The OHI form lists the building as a two-story non-street brick structure located between the marginal, margin between commercial and residential districts. Very, OHI form goes on to describe the building as a very plain house connected with another house of modern addition serving as an entrance. The applicant is requesting to install wall signage, matching the placement previously approved wall signage at this location on the West Main Street facing the building. Proposed sign is 3.6 square feet. On the Oxford Street face, the proposed sign is 22 square feet. And at the entry door for the business, proposed sign is 3.5 square feet. Building is permitted to have a maximum of 150 square feet, and this proposed signage and the existing signage will be under that allowance. Proposed colors are as follows: Sherwin-Williams safety red, SW 7076 cyber space gray, Sherwin-Williams 6994 black of night, and also white. Colors are presented in a different format than the previous application. This application has been reviewed for compliance with zoning requirements except for the additional design standards imposed by the historic district. Staff does recommend approval for the proposed signs based on the proposed sign colors do not detract from the historic integrity of the building. Proposed sign colors are in keeping with the visual relationship of the surrounding streetscape, and the colors are in keeping with the surrounding character of the historic neighborhood.
At the last meeting, there were some alternatives proposed. Are there any discrepancies between what's proposed today and the alternative just proposed at the last meeting?
This is essentially the last alternative you saw at the previous meeting, which garnered the most favorable feedback, and that is what they're proposing today.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff?
Yes. In every picture we've had of this, it shows the three signs with the hospice sign, but I have not yet seen that on the building. Are they going to be in this order on the side of the building, the way we see it in the picture, since they're not up there yet?
Yes, we-
Dustin Lees here, Lees Realty. I'm not sure what you have in the pictures, so I'll make sure we're all taking the same way.
Yeah, let's-
Is it the, the, the middle, Kummer on top, Lees Realty, the hospice?
That's what we have.
Okay, yeah.
And hospice has not been put up yet because they were trying to figure out how they wanted the placement of these, and obviously-
So that'll go up-
-some of that stuff up a little bit.
So the hospice will go up at the same time as this one will-
That's correct.
John Kummer, property owner, 322 West Main Street. So hospice sign is delayed putting up because they must wait for some type of approval from a state organization in regards to their type of business. However, as soon as this week, that sign will be finally approved by their governing body. And then, as the signs will be John Kummer on the top, Lees Realty in the middle, and hospice in Miami Valley on the bottom.
Aye. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
This has nothing to do with the layout of the signs. It's just, it caught me when I was reading it at home. It's cyberspace gray was one of the colors called out.
How's that historical?
Just because-
What's that? How's cyber space historical?
Well, I was reading some things about Star Wars type, but where is that in the sign?
That is actually, if you look at the first layout with the three buildings-
Yeah.
Or the three signs, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The gray is actually kind of the board color now.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Instead of a red or a white.
Yeah, I'm not criticizing the color. I just thought it, it kind of hit me, and I thought, well, I didn't even see it.
Yeah, according to Mr. Quinter, it's apparently a common color they uses for gray.
I like the name, that's cool.
Yeah, color name.
Any other questions of staff?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved. Is there support for the motion?
I'll support that.
Mrs. Snee, any further discussion? Please call it all.
Mrs. Snee? Yes. Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Approved.
Next matter, historic district application for 8 South Market Street. Staff have a report.
Yes, sir, we do. Put back into the right page. The applicant, Mr. Wade Westfall, of Four Sons Development, and his consultant, Ms. Nielsen, are here in the audience. If you have direct questions, do so choose. Mr. Westfall of Four Sons Development is requesting permission to review the proposed facade changes to the front entrance of this building at 8 South Market Street. The OHI form lists this property as a modernistic design building with a recessed central bay of the actual shant facade, containing a two-story semicircular entranceway with road molding, ashware arch and frame, also ashware alternating with modernistic relief panels. Form also specifically calls out the current exterior anodized weather screen, which unfortunately masks the fine decorated bronze recessed entrance. At the top, there are seven bay, there is a seven bay Romanesque arcade balcony, capped by an eagle, supported torch base, with an elaborate crest and relief on both sides. The building is described as a fine modernistic building that contributes to the quality of the historic district. This property is on B2 General Business District and is listed on the National Historic Register. I've broken down his proposal into each individual item, and then I'll discuss each item separately. The request is the removal of the exterior weather screen, opening the front facade back to the original recessed entry. The existing storefront will be renovated and replaced with new similar entry doors and new storefront-style windows and a dark bronze trim. A new installation of a flat roof covering the entryway from the original recessed windows to the existing entry doors, matching the building style with cables and bolt plates as accents for an appearance of supportive structure. Installation of new arched echo style wall sconces lighting to the sides of each entry or of the entryway. Installation of new signs using cut and painted metal for the sign, lockbox 290 mounted on top of the entryway with vinyl window graphics on the entry doors matching the The removal of the existing weather screen would restore this entryway back to the original design of a recessed entry as it was designed and erected in 1930. Installation of a new storefront, entry doors and windows in dark bronze with a four-foot flat roof will provide a transition from the original recessed windows to the new storefront windows. And that transition will happen with that flat roof. There is a four-foot difference between the storefront and the original recess. Again, with the cables and bolt plates for accent pieces. Installation of new arched echo style lighting on both sides of the entryway, keeping with the building era and style, but not originally installed when the building was erected. I did include a example that we asked the applicant to provide, that is the style of light sconces they, they're seeking to actually purchase and install. Installation of a new sign in vinyl graphics with colors of dark bronze and gold, measure a total of 23.75 square feet in size, and which is under the maximum allowance of signage for this building. This application has been reviewed for compliance. Staff does recommend approving the proposed plan. This alteration does not detract from the historic integrity of the building. Proposed alterations restored the building and facade back to more original design than what is currently existing, and will also stay compatible with the existing streetscape. And proposed materials and colors are in keeping with the existing colors and the architectural style and time period of the building.
Wow. Let me show my ignorance here. When we're talking about the weather screen, we're talking about the front vertical portion of the entranceway all the way to the top of the concave structure. Is that correct?
Correct. Above the entry doors, there's the black panels. If you, if you look some of the supplied pictures, that's where the original or the previous tenant, U.S. Bank, had their signage located. So essentially, from the bottom, well, at the top of that black panel on that photo, yes.
I'm looking at this. This is the current picture, right?
Correct.
And we're talking about the weather screen, you're talking about the stuff that's, that's above the entranceway right now.
Correct.
So that's going to go away, and it's going to go back about four foot to its original location. Is that stuff still there, or is it-
It is.
Oh, that's great.
A lot of the trim pieces are still there. The applicant's going to restore that.
Yeah, it's beautiful, solid bronze.
Wow, that's nice.
It's very nice.
Any other questions of staff? You smiling?
Gagging with the applicant in the audience.
Okay. Any action?
The only question I have, just lockbox 290, yes. The address is 8, right? South Market Street, lockbox 290 is just the name of the place.
It is. The applicant has a reason for that if you want to, if you want to elaborate on that.
Sure. You see, I haven't talked to-
Lockbox 290 came up, of course, at the bank, and we've got approximately 3,689 lockboxes in it. But also, back in the day, we're bringing another part of a story of legacy of the city of Troy. Hayner did their business through mail ordering whiskey, and their, and their P.O. box was 290. So we're kind of merging those two names, those two stories together, and that's how we came up with lockbox 290.
Did you find anything in that box?
Not yet. I do have all the keys. Trust me, the bank went through that place and pulled everything out.
It's a neat project.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And so, I may have missed this, Robert, but if I'm looking at page 26 of the packet, which may or may not help everyone this morning. So the, the black area where it used to say U.S. Bank, that will go away. Everything above that will be recessed four feet. There will continue to be a platform, though, and the bottom part of it will not be recessed?
Correct. The existing storefront, where the doors currently exist, those will be removed and replaced with a new set of storefronts.
Right, in the same place.
In the same spot.
All right.
And then, at the top, where you see the bold black line where the sun is attached, that will be the actual roof that creates that transition backwards to the-
Kind of like a line coming off.
Yes, sir.
Right, where the, where that, right above the door, where the first beam is, below the black, that's an, that's a beam, and then there's another beam up on top of the, the second beam up top will be eliminated, where that first one will be a part of the roof structure, so we don't have to remount back into the, into the limestone. That carries the structure of that whole entire glass. So by eliminating that, we'll be able to get rid of one of the, the top beam above the black.
Okay.
But the bottom one will stay to be a part of the roof.
Thank you. The, the lockbox sign, you said, what kind of material is that going to be?
The applicant said that would, would be a cut metal sign. I know one of the previous applicants also had a kind of laser cut, digitally cut sign, and then they'll paint it in matching color tones of the bronze.
So the background of the, of the lockbox sign, that'll all be transparent?
On the-
The background of lockbox, if I'm looking at this picture correctly?
Yes, to, yes. It's going to be completely cut out, as you said.
Oh, completely cut out.
Yeah.
And so how will it be fastened to the, to the black top?
I would assume it would be some bolt pattern.
To the beam?
Yeah, to the actual beam.
Kind of like the, somewhat similar to the, is it the hairstyle stylus that's on the roof?
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to project out beyond the existing structure that's there. It's going to be mounted directly to that beam section.
Yeah, sure, okay. Thank you.
Now, the, right now, we're just talking about the entryway, the signs. Are also up for approval, and also the lamps?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Commission, want to take any action?
Chairman, I'd vote for approval of all three of the submissions, the sign, the remodeling, and the lights.
Which is the entire application?
Yes.
Is there support for the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call it all. Please call it all.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, next matter for consideration, historic district proposal. Give us some commentary on the July 24th workshop.
Yes, we do, thank you.
Could you state your name?
My name is Tim Davis, 100 South Market Street, Troy, Ohio. At the July 10th, 2019 planning commission meeting, we held a workday session with the yard and company. This, the purpose of this meeting was to dissect the planning commission's brains to determine what items needed focused upon, what we were struggling with, and to possibly provide some solutions. And attached to this packet, you will see that report. It was also handed out at the July 24th meeting, so we wanted to give you ample time to review it and provide comments. And so we wanted to see what the planning commission thought about their draft. I did hear back from Mayor Bemish and Larry Wilkie, so, on their comments, but I wanted to hear from the rest of the commission.
A lot of what they're saying is factual in nature, so I didn't have any dispute with probably the first three or four pages. But then it came to the recommendations, and I guess the good, better, best recommendations. Now, of course, we'd like to do, I would prefer to go with the best, but I don't think some of those are realistic. I guess I didn't get enough of a direction when I read this. But I don't know that there's a whole lot of direction to go. I'm still kind of torn as to what we need to be looking at in the historic district. And I guess it's not, we're still not real clear, even after reading this, or given the recommendations.
Speaking with them, I think their takeaways were, we struggle with probably items other somewhat communities struggle with, which comes down to color. Unless you're going to provide a color sample, they, they talked about how that was a struggle of ours without laying out and approving preset colors. It's very difficult to do and not have a personal hunch or a feeling one way or another. They did stress looking at the block fronts, trying to tie into the building colors, things of that nature was what they had stressed to us after the meeting. And I think what they were trying to do is give you some ideas and directions where maybe in this area, you could pursue this option should you want to. That's kind of, I think, what their intent was with this draft. If there's items that you specifically like, say, oh, I would really like to do this option, then that's what staff would kind of pursue further if something stuck out to you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I agree with you. I did like, I liked all their recommendations, but my hesitation is, is that it's kind of a one-size-fits-all, which I think, in my mind, we found is not the case, particularly recently, including today, in talking about the U.S. Bank building. What we got was, we, we got some perspective, we got the history, we had a little research that was presented as part of this to justify why the applicant wanted to go back to the way it was. You know, another great example was the Siedelman Building, the Cass Building, and how thoroughly that was researched. You know, I would feel like, at a minimum, if we had that, if we required that kind of research on some threshold of improvement, you know, required, certainly not on every single thing, because it may be overwhelming if it's a very simple request, but for multiple item requests, like today's was three different types of modifications, that that kind of research be included, and maybe that's a tweak to the zoning code or the architectural section of the code to make that a requirement of an, of an application.
I like that. I've always spoken before about the fact that if somebody wanted to really push through a color or a, a change in the facade of a building, that they ought to take a look at past history and bring it to our attention, because we're sitting here, and the only thing that we have before us is the application and the recommendations of staff. And that if we can get some, something to hang our hat on, it'd be a lot easier to go ahead and go forward with the application, voting for or voting against it. Another example was the Toon Law Building, the little sheriff's building. He came to us a year and a half ago, I think it was, for a signage, and he presented the fact that there has been typical signage on that building before, on these colors, and showed us some photographs. And then, we're not always going to get photographs, but the presentation today on, on the First National Bank in Troy building, that was exciting. It was nice to see what it looked like and how they're going to go ahead and put that back the way it was, so, for the most part. And I think maybe that would be something that we can do, and this whole thing is incorporated into our, either just inform staff that we have had that information from planning commission meetings to voice, to, for their own recommendation, first of all, to us, so we can make a decision on an application, or even put it in legislation if you wanted to, to go ahead and say it's required with any sign or historic district application. I like that.
Of a certain magnitude.
Yeah. Well, of a certain magnitude.
I don't know, you know, if it's value-
Sometimes the hardest cases, though, are the ones that are in fallen nature.
Yeah, sure.
And, and the only thing I'll add, because I agree with that, is just that I thought one of the other items that we brought up as something that we want to consider is actually something they put under the what is working section, where it says, the process to date has worked for demolition, and then it adds, but there's a sentence that this could be tested in the future. Well, I think that testing in the future was something we wanted some kind of comment about, you know. I mean, we, yes, we're expecting the testing, so give us some feedback on considerations when a demolition request comes in, in the historic district. And I didn't see that that made it into the things to be addressed section.
I think research has helped us with making some decisions on the last few buildings that have come forward. I mean, you know, just like where Grandpa Joe's is and Heron's, and this one, you know, history's helped a lot.
What I don't want to get down to is having a color palette and requiring people to go ahead and go into that color palette, or they don't get approval, because I think it has to be a subjective, flexible type of decision. If we go there, then, then we're right back to where we're at right now.
Well, I share the frustrations in terms of doing things by gut feeling, and what I asked at the previous meeting, and I ask the same thing now, is who's doing it better than we are, and what are they doing differently than we are?
Yeah, we actually discussed with Yard and Company, maybe doing some sort of small survey through communities our size to see what they're doing, if they have criteria, things of that nature. And they actually told us to hold off and wait until after the workshop was done, just to see what direction we guys were going in. But we can continue with that, if that's something you'd be interested in as well.
Well, I mean, following on, I think I would be interested in, if, if a community decides to have something as strict as a color palette book, and say, you're required to stick within this range of colors, what is their reason why? I mean, do they have already a historic district that is, is so uniform looking in nature that they want to keep it that way? Or is there some reason, because everything is from a certain period in history? I, I would just like to know, what are the reasons that communities would decide to go that way versus what we seem to feel, which is, it's better to look at each individual project and its history, or what the redevelopment is?
I'm not sure you'll find a community around us that has that, but, yeah.
And, and that's fine, I mean, because maybe that's not the way.
It's probably for those reasons, yeah.
Okay.
Outside of cyberspace gray, you know, maybe a color that's just uniquely accepted everywhere.
That's a, that's a marketing gimmick by Sherwin-Williams, you know? It worked on you.
Yeah. It's probably out.
We'll certainly provide the feedback to them. This was their draft. I'll provide your feedback and see what they come back with, and we'll present that to you when we get that back.
Yeah, and I, it's one of those things where you don't want to spend lots of time with bringing back information that in the end doesn't mean that much to us. And I know that's a real subjective statement, but, you know, it's like, where, where are they, who's doing it better than us, and what are they doing? Maybe just initially is, give us some examples, you know, whether it be Milford, Ohio, or Montgomery, or New Bremen, something like that, where we're familiar with, because, you know, New Bremen's kind of, everybody talks about how wonderful that is. Well, that's because 90% of the buildings were owned by one person, and they call a shot. So then, you know, I guess we could ask Wade if he wants to buy everything downtown. We could just deal with that.
That was actually one of the recommendations, I believe.
Okay. So, you know, but I mean, kind of, before they spent a lot of time, just, you know, maybe giving us some quick feedback of how we would answer that question that Larry brought up. But, yeah, I don't know, is there anybody you can think of or know that you ever run across that has like a palette of colors?
That has one?
Yeah. Macamah Island.
Yeah, there, there are communities out there.
It's white, though, right? And it just-
They just pick a palette, you know, they pick a palette, and you've got to be in that palette.
Seaside.
And I just wonder if that's too restrictive.
Yeah, and I mean, that's a different type of place. That's what I'm saying, are the places that use palettes so restrictive that we would, that's not-
If you go to-
-you know, what we're about.
The Boston's, things of that nature, they have different neighborhoods, probably have that, but they're in a different ballgame than we are.
If you were to take this survey, you wouldn't want to survey a place like Centerville that really don't have a downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, whereas if we continue to follow the model that's kind of being established with some of these, the, the research that's been done, then we're focusing, first of all, we're using a resource that not a lot of other communities have, and that's our historic library, that is, is very comprehensive, I think, and is a great resource. And then, number two, you know, we're, we're able to back up particularly sign colors with some history. Like, you know, it's, people are very interested when we, when I've told them about how we came to the, the approval of the Cass Building, when we talk about the, the war and the regiment that was upstairs in the third floor, I think, and, you know, they just, it just adds a new element, and it's, it's a good justification, and people say, oh, yeah, that makes sense.
And some of the recommendations that they're making are very time-intensive of staff, where we're going to have to subcontract that workout, go ahead and create a lookbook of all the downtown colors, or create a Troy Taylor pattern, go out and define specific range of criteria for the historic, and all those things are very requirements of staff to go ahead and propose a bid to us, or to subcontract that out. I don't know that that needs is there. My overall impression, and you don't even tell them this, I don't know that this was a real useful one. I, I think they missed the ball on demolition. And I think what they did is they, they made conclusions based upon what we were telling them at the last meeting, and just kind of regurgitated them back to us. I don't know that it was your fault.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested in the demolition. I know there's potentially a case out there, but I always kind of thought about this when I was working with the county, you know, as the county was meeting their required parking space area, you know, they were tearing down buildings. And I can't say there's anyone that stood by mind that shouldn't be, but, you know, there's, there, you just wouldn't want people willy-willy tearing them down just to put parking spots in. So it would be nice to have some guidance there, that, you know, we could fall back on.
We had provided some comments, some feedback from the staff level, some questions that we wrote down. I don't know if it was Larry or Alan that asked about what is historic. I think it was the first question we started off with, and they didn't really touch that subject. So there's some things that we reached out to them as well, that they'll, they'll add to the final draft with your comments, too, so.
So as far as- So as far as the comments today, I think what you've heard, if I could summarize, is that they need to hit demolition, because they ignored that. What else are we saying here?
Well, again, I want to know who's doing a better job than we are.
Yeah, yeah, other community outreach, outreach to other communities.
And how historic do we want to be? You know, I'm imagining in the 1870s, when Monsieur Eiffel wanted to build that tower, had there been a historic preservation organization, they would have never allowed that.
Appreciate the comments, I'll give it back to the consultants, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Staff have anything else to come before the commission today?
We do, we have one item. It is a save the date card for the ever-famous and well-known, signing is on any workshop whatever year. So it is held on Friday, December 6th. I know the mayor will be going, and when you decide you want to go, just let me know, and I'll register you. In about a month or two, they'll actually have the schedule of topics that I'll pass out to you, but this was just a save the date card for Friday, December 6th.
December 6th.
December 6th, yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can we make sure that the mayor-elect gets that, since-
Will do, yes.
He will probably benefit from it.
Okay.
Excellent suggestion. Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. McGary?
One new business, I guess. I was approached by a citizen that was asking whether or not the Planning Commission had an opportunity to review the preliminary plans for the development of the Duke Park prior to the election. And I, you know, I didn't indicate where I faulted on it, but I was just curious, is that something that comes before Planning Commission?
No, no. We'd be happy to share it with you, I mean, it-
But it's not a requirement, it's not like a subdivision.
Right.
That's what I related to in my mind, and it's not a subdivision or a development in that sense.
I will tell you that it's supposed to come before Park Board.
Yeah.
The Park Board did have a meeting approving the levy, but Park Board reserved the right to go ahead and say, okay, within the confines of Duke Park, we may not be, want this feature there or that feature there, it's a plan that would incorporate a splash pad, for instance, or mini golf, and maybe not at the locations in this perimeter plan. So the Park Board has to prove it for other purposes.
That's, I thought it was redundant to have the planning commission, especially have a right in Park Board, you've had these things over. I will make my response accordingly.
Anything else to come before the commission today? I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hold on a second, I have a second.
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Dendron.